Hello, everybody. I'm Paulette Evans and I'm super excited to be with you again today, leading another AP Biology study session, this time Study Session 5 on cladograms and phylogenetic trees. And so the bulk of our conversation today will be about the relatedness between organisms, and we're going to get to that in just a second. But as always, I want to check in with you to see how you're doing. I hope that you're well. I hope that you're taking care of yourself, after you've given yourself space where you need it. And like the kids are saying nowadays, that you get out and touch some grass. So again, welcome to Study Session 5 on cladograms and phylogenetic trees. So first, just some basic definitions around phylogenetic relationships and shared ancestry and how we establish that. The root word of phylogenetic is phylogeny, and it is the history of the evolution of a species or group, especially in reference to lines of descent and relationships among broad groups of organisms. And so your question may now be, well, how do we establish these relationships between organisms? How do we know who's more closely related and who shares a relative or common ancestor that is much farther back? And so we establish those phylogenetic relationships between organisms based on, first here, DNA and RNA sequences of specific genes. In this way, the more similar the sequences, the more recently the organism shared a common ancestor. And I think that makes, that makes sense. You can also compare the amino acid sequences of specific proteins. The more similar the sequences, the more similar the DNA and genes. Then, the more recently the organism shared a common ancestor. And as you know, because of transcription and translation, amino acid sequences and protein sequences are derived from messenger RNA. Messenger RNA is transcribed from DNA, alright? So all of this is kind of related. And lastly, here we have that we can compare morphology or share derived characteristics, or the physicality or the body features, the body parts of organisms, right? The more traits or physical characteristics or morphology the organism share, the more recently they share a common ancestor. And so these are the basic ways that we can kind of establish these kind of visual pictorial relationships. And these are hypothesized relationships, but we're really taking strong evidence if we take these three parameters here: DNA, RNA, amino acid sequences, and morphology or physical characteristics. So phylogenetic trees can be depicted in a couple of different ways. So we'll talk about just kind of the broad phylogenetic tree like the one in the initial picture. Phylogenetic trees are a branching tree-like diagram used to illustrate evolutionary or phylogenetic relationships among organisms. Each node or point of divergence has two branching lines of descendants, indicating evolutionary divergence from a common ancestor. A phylogenetic tree is drawn like a branching tree diagram in which branch length is proportional to the evolutionary distance or time between organisms. This is not true in a cladogram. Cladograms do not indicate time. Branch lengths are typically all the same length in a cladogram, and I'll show you an example of both. First, here are examples of phylogenetic trees, alright? And let's take a look at the one on the left, or the rooted phylogenetic tree. You can see here that all of the lines, regardless of color, and you can see the key for the color here is the domains of life. But you can see that all of the lines here in the picture are all variable. That's because the lines are also congruent or proportional to time, alright? So here, for example, you can see here, let's go over here where we are with the animals. You can see that the Trichomonads here are more closely related to this more recent common ancestor here than are animals. And the way that you know that is because the Trichomonads are closer in distance on this line here than are animals. So if you take animals here, that line down to this most recent common ancestor with Archaea would be here, okay? So Trichomonads would be more closely related to Archaea than animals would be to Archaea. Now, would you say that animals are not related to Archaea at all? That's not the case, but we are. It's just that our most common recent ancestor is farther back, is farther back. So here, these lines are also comparable to time. A cladogram is a branching tree-like diagram used to illustrate evolutionary or phylogenetic relationships among organisms as well. Each node or point of divergence has two branching lines of descendants, indicating evolutionary divergence from a common ancestor. A cladogram is a type of phylogenetic tree. Well, what you need to remember about the cladogram is that most of the lines drawn in a cladogram are going to be equidistant, alright? And so that the lines themselves do not depict time. So here is an example of a cladogram. And you can see here, you can see here on this baseline here, that all of these kind of perpendicular lines are all equidistant from one another. All of the derived characteristics or these physical characteristics are all equidistant from the cell, at least at this region here. Here you have a branching event. This is just an example, and you can see them look a lot of different ways, okay? So just in general, they do not have the same type of length-to-time relationship as the more broader phylogenetic tree we looked at just a minute ago. But you read them very similar, okay? You read them very similar. So on this particular picture, these derived characteristics that are plotted here on this bottom line of this cladogram, if you, organisms that exist below, below the derived characteristic, they do not possess the characteristic. Organisms that exist above the characteristic do have the characteristic. So for example, you would read this like, here, the hagfish does not have jaws. So you would say that all organisms that exist above jaws have them. So the perch, the salamander, the lizard, the pigeon, the mouse, and the chimp all have jaws, okay? If you go to the next characteristic or derived characteristic, these are all morphological. You see lungs. So any organism that exists below the marking for lungs should not have or do not have lungs. All the organisms above do. So I would read this like, the perch and the hagfish do not have lungs because their branching event exists below the lungs here. All of the organisms above, the salamander, the lizard, the pigeon, the mouse, and the chimp all have lungs because their branching events exist above lungs. And that's how you read a cladogram. Alright, so here are some important terms to know when thinking about phylogenetic trees and cladograms. First, a clad. A clad is a group of biological taxa such as a species that includes all of the descendants of one common ancestor. Then you have a root, the initial ancestor common to all organisms within that cladogram. This is the point which begins the cladogram, alright? Or the root, alright? The morphology, a branch of biology dealing with the study of the form and structure of organisms and their specific structural features. And we've talked about that a little bit so far. You have ancestral traits, a trait shared by a group of organisms as a result of a descent, a descent from a common ancestor. And then derived trait, you may have seen me just call them derived characteristics, also called derived traits, a trait that is present in an organism but was absent in the last common ancestor of the group being considered. Alright, so constructing a cladogram based on morphology, based on morphology, alright? So we're going to take a look at a character table on the next slide. And it's going to have organisms plotted on one side, and you're going to have characteristics, morphology, physical characteristics plotted on the other side of the table. And you'll see what I'm talking about in just a second. In the table, I want you to use a 1 to indicate that an organism possesses a trait and a 0 to indicate that the organism does not possess the trait, okay? So 1s means that the organism has it, the 0 means the organism does not have it. I do want to make a special note here. In cladograms, on the exam and maybe on some classroom test, you'll sometimes see a 1 or a plus sign to denote the possession of a trait. So sometimes you'll see a 1, sometimes you'll see a plus. I want you to use the number 1. But just know that sometimes when you see a depicted, you may see a plus sign. Conversely, you may see a 0, or you may see a minus sign, or an empty box to denote an absence of a trait, or where the organism doesn't have a particular physical trait, alright? And so in our example, I want you to use the 0 to denote that the organism does not have the trait. So when you get to exam time, just I want you to pay close attention to the question setup and to see if there's an available key. Sometimes they'll put keys around the tables to give you additional information on how to read it. But in general, these, what I've listed or what I've described here will generally be the case, okay? The trait possessed by all of the organisms is the ancestral trait. So let's take a look at the character table, alright? So here's the character table, and let's look at this one together, alright? So here, on the top, you have the actual characteristics or the traits. You have eukaryotic, whether the organism is eukaryotic or not. Is the organism multicellular or not? Does the organism have a vertebral column or not? Does the organism have an amniotic egg or amniotic sac or not? Does the organism have hair or not? A placenta or not? A opposable thumb or not? And then you see there's a column for totals. And let's take a look at the organisms that are plotted on the left-hand side. You have the paramesium, a flatworm, a shark, a hawk, a kangaroo, a camel, and a human. So what I want you to do is I want you to take a minute, and I just want you to either write some notes down on 1s or 0s where they would go in this particular table, or take a screenshot, and you can annotate it on your phone. So you can go ahead and stop the recording and fill out the character table, and then come back and then press play, and then we'll have it all filled in, and we can talk about it. So let's take a look at the completed character table. And y'all be patient with me as I move myself around. Thank y'all. Alright, so let's take, remember we used 1s and 0s, okay? 1 meaning that you possess the trait, 0 meaning you did not possess the trait, okay? So first, we have the paramesium. The paramesium is eukaryotic, but the paramesium doesn't have any of the other characteristics that we have listed. And so even though it does bear one of the characteristics, we would call the paramesium the outgroup in this case, alright? Sometimes the outgroup doesn't have any of the characteristics. Sometimes the outgroup will have one of the characteristics. But just know, the organism that has the least amount of characteristics that we are discussing here, which are these at the very top, is going to be your outgroup, okay? And it's going to be to the far end of your cladogram. And we'll talk about constructing the cladogram in just a second, alright? And when we take a look at the flatworm, I love the way that this is laid out. The flatworm is both eukaryotic and multicellular. But the flatworm is not, does not have a vertebral column, no amniotic egg, hair, placenta, or opposable thumb. And you see how this table is working, okay? So I'm going to let you take a screenshot of this, and I'm going to let you double-check your work, alright? Know that on an AP exam, you're not going to have to look up and find and fill in a character table. Most often, the character table will be completed for you. So your start picture on an exam question would more than likely look like something like this. Or something with pluses and minuses in it, but you, you know how that works, okay? And so the next question will be, how do we show a picture of relatedness based on this information, okay? And so that's what we're going to do now. Okay, let's take a look at how to construct a cladogram. I'm going to read these directions to you. As I read them, you may want to do just like a practice run of drawing a cladogram on your paper, but I'm going to show you a few examples when we're done, either way, okay? Alright, so step one, you're going to draw a single right slanted line from the bottom left-hand corner of your paper toward the top right-hand corner of the page. At the top of the line, list the most complex group of organisms. This organism should possess more of the shared derived traits than any of the other organisms. And, and based on the table that we just looked at, it would be the individual with the most 1s in possession of the most traits. This line will be the main evolutionary pathway or line, alright? Step two, determine the first outgroup. This is the most primitive or oldest group of organisms. It will share only one of the traits, the ancestral trait, with the other taxa or clads, and therefore will be your first outgroup. Just up from the root on your cladogram, the bottom left-hand corner, draw a left slanted line off of the main line. At the top of the line, write the name of the taxon of your first outgroup. Step three, just below and to the left of the outgroup line, draw a short horizontal line across the main line. At the end of this small line, write the name of the ancestral trait, the trait shared by all of the organisms in the cladogram. Step four, just above the outgroup line, draw a left slanted line that will show the most primitive group or second outgroup. List the group name at the end of the line. This group should possess only the ancestral trait and one additional shared derived trait. These and all of the other organisms that evolved later are referred to as the in-group. Step four, between the first outgroup line and the line drawn in step four, draw a small horizontal line across the main line. At the right end of the small line, write the name of the shared derived trait that separates the first outgroup and the first taxa in the in-group. Step six, looking at the character table, decide the next group of organisms to become the next outgroup each time. Draw another line, a leaning, left leaning line for them, and list their name at the end of the line. Be sure to use horizontal lines across the main line to indicate the traits which separate the outgroups. So basically, we're just repeating the process. Only traits shared by all of the organisms above and to the right of the indicated line should be included on the main line. Step seven, repeat until all groups of organisms have been listed or branched off the main evolutionary line. And finally, if you have two groups of organisms in the same outgroup, draw one left leaning line for the group. Have a second right leaning line branching off of the left leaning line. On the second right leaning line, draw a small horizontal line and list the separating trait there, just as you did on the main line, alright? And I think we saw an example of that in one of the cladograms, or we will see an example of that in one of the cladograms in our multiple choice. Alright, so let's take a look at what a basic construction of this cladogram might look like. And just remember, these are all hypothesized relationships based on the information that we have, that we collected in the character table, alright? So let's take a look at a possible cladogram kind of base structure. Okay, here so, we have a basic construction of a cladogram based on the character table that we looked at before with the 1s and 0s in it. And so if you notice here, you have your main diagonal line going from bottom left to top right. And perpendicular to that diagonal, you have the organisms plotted from paramesium all the way to humans, right? So the next thing that we would do is we would find the relative position of each of the traits that we had on the table. So I'll do the first couple for you, and I'll write them in, and then I'll show you one that's kind of complete and drawn in, okay? So if you do have a moment to go ahead and fill in your, your basic cladogram, please go ahead and do so. If there's a feature in EdPuzzle, go ahead and write in the derived traits where you find that they're best positioned based on the information that we have from the character or trait table. Okay, if you remember the rules, what happens is, the derived trait itself, if the organism is in possession of the derived trait, the organism should exist above it on the diagonal line. If the organism is not in possession of the derived trait we're talking about, then the organism should be below that derived trait on the diagonal line. So if I were to use the annotation feature, and I was to write in the very first derived trait that we found on our character table, I think that was eukaryotic. Since all of the organisms that we are dealing with here, we're looking at, are eukaryotic. That means eukaryotic would exist below the organisms, or the organisms would exist above the eukaryotic marking. So I'm going to write in "eukary" here, so you know exactly what I'm talking about and how I'm positioning it. Yeah, I know that my annotations are absolutely horrible, and there is a better way, but we'll work on that. Thank you for being patient and kind. So here you see, I plotted "eukaryotic" here on the diagonal line itself, and all of the organisms exist above it, and how do I read that? All of the organisms we're looking at here are eukaryotic. So let's look at the next derived trait. The next derived trait was multicellularity, or whether the organism is multicellular or not. Now, all of these organisms are multicellular, except, except, except for the paramesium, okay? So multicellularity would be best positioned here on the diagonal, in between paramesium and flatworm. So I'm just going to put in multi... Multi... Oh wow. Multi-C for multicellularity, okay? How would you read this? The paramesium is not multicellular, so it exists below multicellularity on this diagonal line. The flatworm, the shark, the hawk, kangaroo, camel, and the human, all multicellular organisms, and so they should exist above this marking. And so I hope that makes sense to you. Now let's look at, or I'll give you an opportunity to finish drawing the traits into the cladogram, and then we'll take a, take a look at one that's completely filled in. Alright, let's take a look at the possible or hypothesized completed cladogram here. Take a look at what you did. Did you organize your derived traits in this order? This was pretty straightforward, right? Because all of the 1s and 0s were kind of in alignment, so that was very helpful. You will not always have that on the AP exam, and we'll look at some examples of, of questions like that in just a sec. But here, you can establish relatedness based on a picture like this. You can say, which two organisms are more closely related? Or which organism is more closely related to the camel, the kangaroo, or the shark, alright? Which organism is most closely related to the camel, the kangaroo, or the shark? Alright, so using molecular evidence to create cladograms, okay? Using molecular evidence to create cladograms. So I wanted you to take a screenshot of this slide as well. So go ahead and take a screenshot of this slide, or you can just pause the recording, either way, either way. Alright, I'm going to read through this one with you really quickly, alright? "All organisms use DNA and RNA as genetic material, and the genetic code by which proteins are synthesized is almost universal. This shared molecular heritage means that nitrogenous-based and amino acid sequences can be compared to ascertain levels of relatedness. Over the course of millions of years, mutations will accumulate within any given segment of DNA. The number of differences between comparable base sequences demonstrates the degree of evolutionary divergence. A greater number of differences between comparable base sequences suggests more time has passed since the two species diverged. Hence, the more similar the base sequences are to, are two species are, the more closely related the two species are expected to be. When comparing molecular sequences, scientists may use non-coding DNA gene sequences or amino acid sequences. Non-coding DNA provides the best means of comparisons as mutations will occur more readily in these sequences. Gene sequences mutate at a slower rate as changes in base sequences may potentially affect protein structure and function. Amino acid sequences may also be used for comparison, but will have the slowest rate of change due to codon degeneracy, okay? Amino acid sequences are typically used to compare distantly related species, for example, different taxa, while DNA and RNA-based sequences are often used to compare closely related organisms, different haplo groups such as various human ethnic groups." So I think these are very important considerations when looking at molecular evidence, where you use DNA and RNA for more precise relatedness measures, and proteins and amino acid sequence for more distantly related species. Alright, so let's take a look at an example using DNA sequences to compare and construct a cladogram, okay? So the table included below contains the DNA sequences from the same gene from five related species. Calculate percent similarity of the sequences between species B through E when compared to species A. Use the information to create a cladogram. Place species A at the top right-hand corner of your cladogram, okay? So I'm going to help you, I'm going to help you out on this one, okay? And watch this, okay? So basically, we're looking at species A, B, C, D, and E. What they are doesn't matter. Then you have the DNA sequence. I'm not sure what gene this comes from, also doesn't matter. We can still construct a hypothesized picture of relatedness based on this information, okay? I'm going to do A for you, okay? Now watch this. When I take the sequence for A and I compare how similar it is to A, when I compare A to A and I try to calculate similarity, I find that it is 100% similar to itself. A is 100% similar to itself. Now, what I want you to do is I want you to take us, either take a screenshot of this and work to the side, or just press pause on the recording, and you may need to enlarge it just a little bit. What I want you to do is I want you to compare species B to species A, species C to species A, species D to species A, and species E to species A. And I want you to determine how similar each of the species are with relationship to species A. And go ahead and write those in. You can just jot them down in your notes, but just write the percent similarity off to the side of the species of comparison. Alright, welcome back, welcome back. Did you pause me, or did you keep me going? I don't know. Alright, let's take a look at the fielded in table here, okay? So I would take, first thing I would do when answering this, I would say 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. There are 20 nucleotides here, or there are 20 nitrogen bases, right? They're representative of nucleotides, right? So 20 nitrogen bases. So in my percent similarity fraction, if you will, as I'm trying to figure out or determine the percent, my denominator is always going to be 20. And I'm just trying to assess how similar they are. So what I've done here, what we've done is we've highlighted the differences, okay? But remember, the question was to calculate percent similarity, alright? So here, you see that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 differences. So if there's 5 differences, then there's 15 out of 20 nitrogen bases or nucleotides to the same. And so 15 over 20 is 75. Got it, alright? So let's take a look at C when compared with A. When you compare C with A, there's one difference right here. So that would be 19 over 20. And once you calculate the percent of 19 over 20, that's 95% similarity between C and A. Do the same thing with D, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. That's 7 differences when compared, when comparing D to A. So 7 from 20, that will give you 13. 13 over 20 is 65% similarity to A. And then the last one, comparing E to A, you have 1, 2, 3 differences out of the 20, but remember, we're looking for similarity. So that would be 17 over 20. When you render that as a percent, that is 85%. And so now, based on this DNA information, this precise DNA evidence, we can construct a cladogram describing the relationship, or giving us a visual representation of the relationship between all of these species in relationship to A. So now what you do is to pause the recording again, and I want you to construct a cladogram with A being at the top right, and I may be opposite in your, in your view. But at the top right of your drawing, put A, and then I want you to draw any other species based on their relationship to A. Alright, did your possible or hypothesized cladogram come out something like this, alright? So based on the relationships here, C was the most closely related to A, then E, then B, and farthest away but still related to, and you would use these nodes as your markers of relatedness here, where these lines connect here. That D is the least closely related to A. And based on these pictures, when you get to an exam, you can answer a whole host of questions. And the whole host of questions would be just around relatedness itself. Which organism or species is more closely related to A? Would it be B or E? And you would say E. And you could provide evidence. You can say that it is here, it is closer to A. But a more precise answer based on the information that we have is that they share more DNA nucleotides, or they share more nitrogen bases in that example when compared. E shares more when compared to B. Get it out. Let's take a look at our multiple choice questions. Let's look at, let's take a look at multiple choice question 1. It says, "Data regarding the presence with a plus sign or absence with a minus sign of five derived traits in several different species are shown in the table below." Remember when I told you before that there will be some type of key included in the question? This is what I mean by a key, that the question kind of sets up that we're not using 1s and 0s, but here we're using pluses and minuses. Pluses meaning that you have the trait, the derived trait. The minuses mean you do not have the derived trait, alright? So if you take a look at the table, you have the species V through Z on the left-hand side, and traits 1 through 5 on the top. It's not necessary that you know what the species are or what the traits are. We can still construct a hypothetical picture of relatedness based on the information in the table, okay? And so the question is, which of the following cladograms provides the simplest and most accurate representation of the data in the table? So you have your answer choices over on the right. And what I want you to do now is I want you to read over the, the character table, and I want you to log your answer choice in EdPuzzle. Okie doke. How did you do? How did you do? Alright, let's talk about this, and then I'll reveal the answer choice, okay? I think the easiest thing for me when I look I think the easiest thing for me when I look at these tables, and you can come at it lots of different ways. But what I like to do first is I like to look at the outgroup. Okay? The outgroup. I like to find the outgroup and the outgroup here is the organism that has one or none of the traits shown in the table. And if you see here, you have organism Y or species Y, species Y with minuses across the board for all of the characteristic. It doesn't have any of them. Where at least the other species bear some of the characteristics, Y has none. So immediately, I know that Y has to be farther, as far as possible away from the other organisms or the farthest away. So immediately, I'm zeroing in on this first choice and I'm zeroing in on this third choice, just because it's accurately depicting the outgroup Y. Okay? Now let's take a look at some more kind of neatly features inside of the data, the character table and see if we can sift out which one is more accurate, this first answer choice or the third answer choice. So let's take a look at Z. So here's Z. Z has trait one and trait five. I'm gonna look and see if there are any other species that also have trait one and trait five. And so here, immediately I see that all of the other organisms except for Y have trait one. Okay? I'm getting somewhere, but let's look at trait five. Only X has trait five with Z. So that means that X and Z share trait one and trait five and are more closely related to one another than they are to V and W. We know it's far away for Y, right? But X and Z are more closely related to one another than they are to V and W. So if I take a look at this first option versus the third option, which one of those best represents, best represents the relationship between Z and X? I would say this first answer choice here. Okay? Then you just wanna make sure that the other piece makes sense. Well, are W and V more closely related? Let's look at W and V. W and V share one and they share two, where X and Z don't even have chara- uh, character trait or characteristic two. So these two, V and W, these species are more closely related and that would lead me to this first option being the correct answer choice. And I know that's what you put in EdPuzzle. Alright, let me move myself so that you can see. There you go. Alright, let's take a look at the next multiple choice question. Alright, question two. Now we've basically taken that correct answer from the last question and using it as the foundation for this question. Answer the following based solely on the provided cladogram. Which of the following species? Which of the following is species X more closely related to? Is it species Y, species W, species V? Or is it species X is equally related to species W and V? Go ahead and log your answer choice in EdPuzzle. Okie doke, let's take a look at how we would reason through this answer. Alright, first let's find X. Alright, so here is X and it wants us to assess, uh, which species is most closely related to X. I mean, obviously we wanna put Z, but Z is not an answer choice, so we gotta back away from that one. Okay? So here is X. Alright, the first answer choice is Y. Y is the outgroup and all the way down here. Alright, so the most common recent ancestor with X, between X and Y is all the way back here. Alright, so Y would not be the correct answer. Let's take a look at W. The most recent common ancestor between, um, X and W would be this one here. Alright, would be this one here. And if you look at species V, the most common recent ancestor between V and X would also be here, would also be here. Okay? So it's one thing that you need to know about reading these cladograms. Whenever you see this kind of terminal Y shape, either here or even here, there is rotation around this node. You can even rotate around this one. But here, W and V both land here. Both land here for the most common recent ancestor with X. So that means that X here is equally as related to W and V. One, because you can just spin this here is one way to look at it. You can just spin this where V is on this side, W on this side. You can also bring this branching event down to where they share the most common recent ancestor and they share at this point. W and V are together at this point with that, with relationship to X. And so the correct answer choice would be species X is equally related to species W and V. There you go. Alright, let's look at question three. Still looking at that same cladogram. Answer the following based solely on the provided cladogram. Which of the following species, which, which of the following is species W most closely related to? Is it species Y, species V, species X, or species Z? Go ahead and log your answer choice in EdPuzzle. Alright, let's take a look at how I would reason through this answer. Alright, so we're looking at species, which species is more closely related to W. So here is W. And you've got answer choice Y, V, X, and Z. Immediately, V is an option. V is, shares the most common recent ancestor with W here at this node, which means V is the correct answer. How'd you do? Yay! I know you did swimmingly. You did great. Alright? Alright, let's take a look at multiple choice question four. Answer the following based solely on the provided cladogram. The spruce tree does not possess which of the following derived traits? You have needle leaves, stomata, the single cotyledon, or seeds. Go ahead, take a look at the cladogram, assess the cladogram, and log your answer choice in EdPuzzle. Alright, let's take a look and see how you did, but first let's see how I would reason through this one. Okay? Alright, so it says the spruce tree does not possess which of the following derived traits. So let's find the spruce tree first. Alright, so here is the spruce. Okay? And remember how you read these, um, the derived characteristics. If the organism exists below the derived characteristic, it does not have it. If the organism exists above the derived characteristic, it does have it. Okay? So here's the spruce and I'm gonna back the spruce all the way down to this, um, the, um, diagonal line with the derived characters on it. Okay? So here is the most recent ancestor with the pine. You see that the spruce and the pine have needles, um, and leaves because they exist above it. I'm gonna back it all the way down here to D. Uh, D is seeds. They exist above seeds, so they have seeds. They have vascular tissue, they have stomata, um, they have a multicellular embryo. They have all of these things because they exist above it. But here, you have flowers and the single cotyledon. These exist above, these branching events or where the derived characters exist on this diagonal line are above the branching event for the spruce. So here, the branching event for spruce is gonna be right here. The single cotyledon is way up here. So the spruce is below it. That means that the spruce does not have it and that means the correct answer choice here is the single cotyledon. Let's take a look at multiple choice question five. Same cladogram picture. Answer the following based solely on the provided cladogram. Which of the following correctly describes the relationships illustrated in the cladogram? Which of the following correctly describes the relationships illustrated in the cladogram? Go ahead and log your answer choice in EdPuzzle. I forgot to say that, but hopefully you knew to do that. Okie doke, let's see how you did. Now let's see how I would reason through, through this question. Alright? I mean, the, the easiest thing to do is just go through each of the answer choices really quickly to see if they make sense with the cladogram. I mean, that's what you would do to answer the question. Alright, so the first one says, the fern is more closely related to the pine than it is to the spruce. So let's find the fern. It says that the fern is more closely related to the pine than it is to the spruce. So here is, here's the fern, here's the pine and the spruce. Now what you need to remember is what I just told you on the last, not the last immediate question, but the ones with the letters, um, the X, W, V, about the free rotation around these nodes. Alright, so this branching event here, there is free rotation around it. So when you have the pine and the spruce, the pine and the spruce are equidistant to individuals on either side of them in a different branching event. So you would say that the fern is equally related to the pine and the spruce because this, it, there has free rotation here, which means that the spruce could be here and the pine could be here. You could literally take this and do this. Okay, you could take it and just do that. Okay? So this is not correct. This is not correct because you have free rotation here and these two are the same distance or relatedness to the fern. Okay, let's look at B. The maple possesses flowers and needle leaves. Let's find maple. Okay? It says that the maple possesses flowers and needle leaves. So here's the maple. The maple exists above flowers, means that the maple does have flowers. So that checks. But needle leaves, needle leaves. Here, needle leaves exist on this branching event, on this branching event, which means that needle leaves are only possessed by the pine and the spruce because that derived character, it only comes about, it only evolves in this branching event and not this branching event. This branching event has flowers, alright, has flowers. This branching event has needle leaves. Okay? So this one also not the correct answer choice. Let's take a look at C. The wheat and orchid are equally related to the maple. Okay? So it says wheat and orchids, so I found them, they're here. The wheat and the orchid are equally related to the maple. Here, remember, at this branching event, there is free rotation. Alright? Which means orchid could be written here and wheat could be written here. That would mean that the maple is, alright, equally related to wheat and the orchid and the correct answer is C. Should not be C. It should be the third answer choice. Alright? The wheat and the orchid are equally related to the maple, the third answer choice. Now I know in EdPuzzle that you don't have multiple choice and I forgot to remove that one, apologies. But it's the third answer choice, wheat and orchid are equally related to the maple. Okie doke, everybody. Let's take a look at multiple choice question six. Which letter indicates the most recent common ancestor shared by all of the following? Monotremes, birds, placental mammals, and dinosaurs. Alright, now we're looking at kind of a on the side or some kind of side-laying cladogram. Um, and so you're gonna read this from left to right. The branching events happen from left to right. Um, and so go ahead and log the correct answer choice in EdPuzzle to denote the most common recent ancestor shared by all of these organismal groups. Okay, how'd you do? How'd you do? Alright, let's, let's talk about how I would reason through this question. Um, and honestly, I think that you can get the right answer just by looking at the first two, but I'm gonna go in order and I'm gonna show you how I kinda work it back. Alright, I'm gonna start with monotremes and birds and I'm gonna try to find their most recent common ancestor first and then I'll work in the other organisms and see if my answer changes. Alright, so let's start with monotremes first. Let's locate monotremes. Here they are. They're right here. Those are the monotremes or the egg-laying, um, egg-laying mammals. Um, so here, the monotremes and birds, they look close together in this picture, but let's take a look at the branching events. If I back up monotremes here to D, D does not include birds. This branching event would include placental mammals and marsupials. Alright? So if you back it up one more branching event to branch event A, this branching event does include birds. So here, if I start with birds and I back up the birds to this branch, this one, this one, this one, this one, this one, this one, here to A, then you meet this branch event or this node that I worked back for the monotremes. So the most common recent ancestor for monotremes and birds is the, um, is the, the vertebrae or the node indicated by the letter A. So let's take a look and see if that holds true with placentals and dinosaurs. Remember, we want placentals to share with birds and monotremes, right? So here, 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 to get with birds again, you've gotta get to A. That's the only way that you get to this branching event that includes birds. And guess who else is on the same branching event with birds? This branching event. What I mean by this branching event, I mean everything that offshoots from A, so all of this. Everything that offshoots from A includes the dinosaurs, right? So that would mean that A, A would be the most recent common ancestor at that node, um, that would then house all of the organisms that are depicted here, monotremes, birds, placental mammals, and dinosaurs. Yay! So all I did was work from here, from right to left until there was a branching event that included all of the organisms that were listed. Alright, let's take a look at that same cladogram with a different question. The locations of which of the following could be switched without changing any of the evolutionary relationships depicted in the cladogram? So take a look at the answer choices and log your answer in EdPuzzle. Alright, which of the following could be switched without changing any of the evolutionary relationships? Alright? So the first one is monotremes and marsupials. You have monotremes and marsupials. They are not on a terminal branch together. They're not on a terminal branch together. So there is not rotation. Okay? Let's look at birds and dinosaurs. Birds and dinosaurs are on a terminal branch together. Look at them. They come off this node together. This, recent common ancestor, they come together, which means there is free rotation here. Free rotation here. And that is the correct answer. In other words, dinosaurs could be written here, birds could be written here. Okay? That would not be true for monotremes and marsupials. That is not true. Okie doke. So the correct answer, got to the correct answer pretty quickly. It's birds and dinosaurs. Birds and dinosaurs. Alright, let's take a look at multiple choice question eight. Eight. Which of the following species lacks a hinge or lack hinge jaws? Which of the following species lack hinge jaws? The leopards, salamanders, lampreys, or turtles? So go ahead and take a moment and log your answer in EdPuzzle. Alright, this is another one of those flat-laying or on-the-side-laying cladograms. Alright, so you're gonna read this from left to right. And so here, I'm gonna find hinge jaws. Hinge jaws is here. Remember, all of the organisms that exist above hinge jaws have a hinge jaw. That means tuna, salamander, turtle, and leopard all have a hinge jaw. And any organisms that branching event is below hinge jaw does not have a hinge jaw or lacks a hinge jaw. So anything below here, below here, so that's to the left of it, that would be the lamprey and the lancelet. And that means that the correct answer here would be lamprey. Woo-hoo! Y'all did a great job. Alright, that was the answer to multiple choice question eight. Alright, everybody, let's take a look at our last question, our free response question together. Um, I'm going to chunk this free response question into smaller pieces. Just know when you're tackling a long free response question, just to make sure that you're monitoring your time uh, and giving yourself space to generate a response. Okay? So when I take a look at a question like this, my eyes are automatically drawn to the figures. And so at the top, you see kind of a side-laying cladogram with what appears to be a timescale underneath. And figure one, the description says that this is a phylogenetic tree representing the evolutionary relatedness among bear populations based on mitochondrial DNA sequence comparisons. And we know that mitochondria and chloroplasts have their own unique DNA and so this picture was constructed using mitochondrial DNA and that makes sense to me. Alright, so let's take a look at question one. Polar bears are highly adapted for life in cold climates around the North Pole. Brown bears, black bears, and pandas are found in warmer environments. Researchers collected complete mitochondrial DNA sequences from several populations of bears and constructed a phylogenetic tree to represent their evolutionary relatedness. And that depicts what's in the picture. Continuing, a researcher studying adaptation in bears sequenced the nuclear gene encoding a lysosomal trafficking protein or the LIS protein in polar bears, brown bears, black bears, and panda bears. There are seven inferred amino acid substitutions that are found only in polar bears. Mutations that cause similar substitutions in the human LIS protein are are associated with the Shidiak-Higashi syndrome, an autosomal recessive condition in which pigment is absent from the hair and eyes. The researcher used the inferred amino acid sequences to build the distance matrix shown in table one. Let's take a look at table one. Table one says it's the amino acid differences in the LIS protein among bear species. Very important when you look at tables that are plotting amino acid differences. Sometimes it'll say similarities, here we're looking at differences, okay? So each number is gonna mark between the two organisms how much they differ in their amino acid uh, sequence for the LIS protein. And so immediately, I would take a look at which two bears share the least differences or the, are the most similar. That would draw my eyes to the brown and the black bear here with one difference in their amino acid sequence. And then I'll immediately be drawn to the two organisms that are the farthest apart or have the most differences in their amino acid sequence. And that to me here looks like the polar bear and the panda bear would have the most amino acid differences in their LIS protein. So those are just things that I'm looking at. I haven't answered a question or even have looked at a question related to this particular table, but those are things that I'm looking at immediately, um, when I take a look. Um, and by the way, these dashes that you see here are just referring to the comparison of the, the animal to itself. So the, the difference between a panda and a panda in this amino acid sequence where there's, there's not any difference. It's the panda compared to the panda, and so that's what the dashes mean. So let's take a look at and answer A, okay? So, A part reads, use the phylogenetic tree in figure one to estimate the age in hundreds of thousands of years of the most recent common ancestor of all brown bears. Then you need to identify the population of brown bears to which polar bears are most closely related based on the mitochondrial DNA sequence comparison. And then lastly, identify two populations whose positions could be switched without affecting the relationships illustrated in the phylogenetic tree. So I want you to take a minute, I want you to go ahead and document your answer to part A using EdPuzzle. Alright, let's take a look at our answer for A part, okay? So there are three things that you must attend to for A part. First, you have to estimate the age in hundreds of thousands of years, okay? You need to identify the population of brown bears to which polar bears are most closely related. And then you have to identify the two population whose uh, positions could be switched without affecting the relationships illustrated in the phylogenetic tree. That's three things. I think that you can answer part A in three simple sentences. The first thing is estimating the age, um, of the most recent common ancestor of all the brown bears. So let's take a look at the cladogram. First, let's identify all the brown bears. You've got the European brown bear, the Western Northern American brown bear, and the Asian brown bear. Now, if I find the most recent common ancestor for these three groups, it would be right here at this branching point. Take a minute, do you agree? And so there is a timescale that's plotted just beneath this cladogram. And if you drop down right here, this would be, you know, thirty-two to thirty-five? Somewhere in there, thirty-two to thirty-five? So you could say that it's three hundred and twen- three hundred and twenty thousand years ago? Or if you're closer to here, three hundred and fifty thousand years ago? So that's how you would read this, okay? Or you could put thirty-two to thirty-five and then just put in parentheses, hundreds of thousands of years ago. That would also be, be acceptable, okay? Now let's take a look at the identify, the first identify. Identify the population of brown bears to which polar bears are most closely related based on the mitochondrial DNA sequence comparison, okay? So let's go up and let's take a look at polar bears. And the closest relative that is a brown bear would be the European brown bear based on this relationship because they share this branch together. So it'd be the European brown bear, alright, that was pretty straightforward. The last identify is identify two populations whose positions could be switched without affecting the relationships illustrated in the phylogenetic tree. Now, we've seen in other examples that these uh, terminal branching events here and here, you can have free rotation around them. So it doesn't really matter here which side polar bear appears on. Polar bear could be written up top, European bear could be down bottom. The same thing with this branching event, the Western Northern American brown bear could swap spots with the Asian brown bear, and it doesn't change the interpretation. So these two brown bears, the Asian brown bear and the Western Northern American brown bear could swap space. And then up here, the European brown bear could swap spaces or places with the polar bear, and it not changed the meaning of the, of the cladogram or the phylogenetic tree. Alright, so let's take a look at the answer as given by the AP exam, alright? And so here it says that the first two digits of the answer must be between thirty and thirty-five, alright? Which is similar to what I articulated be- before. Um, here, this is identify the population of brown bears to which the polar bears most closely related. That would be the European brown bear. And then last year, identifying two populations whose positions could be switched without affecting the relationships illustrated in the phylogenetic tree. And that would be the European and the polar bear, those two could be swapped. Or the Asian with the Western North American, those two could be swapped. So you wouldn't write both of these, you would write either these two or these two, alright? I hope you did well in EdPuzzle. Alright, let's take a look at B part of our long free response question. Part B reads, match the bear species with the appropriate locations on the cladogram template provided above. For example, LIS tiger at A position, lion at the B position, leopard at the C position, et cetera. So basically, you're gonna organize your actual bears here at the top where the letters are. Then you're gonna indicate by letter the species group that represents the out-group, that represents the out-group. So what I want you to do now is go ahead and document your answer in EdPuzzle. Alright, let's take a look at the answer, and I'm just gonna go through how I think about this in my head, alright? So first, we're gonna talk about just the arrangement of the organisms themselves. I'm gonna go to the extremes to help me kind of understand it. So I would try to find the two bear groups that have the least amount of differences between them in their amino acid sequences for the LIS protein. And that would be right here for the black and the brown bear, there's only one difference. So that would tell me that these two groups should be relatively close in our cladogram picture. So for me, they are a natural fit here at C and D. Then I wanna take a look at the bear group that is just far away from everybody, has the most differences when compared to the other bear groups. And when I take a look here, it appears that the panda has thirty-three amino acids differences with the black bear, thirty-four differences with the brown bear, and forty differences with the polar bear. So that naturally in my mind just screams that the panda is just the out-group when compared to the other bears in the group. And so that kind of helped me sit, helps me situate my cladogram. So I would put the black and the brown bear here at C or D, and it really doesn't matter the orientation there. And then B, I would plot the panda bear, and that would leave B for the polar bear. And that A position actually makes sense when you understand that we have free rotation around these internal uh, nodes. These internal nodes you have free rotation around. Alright, so here's a picture with that answer. Here's a note that the black and the brown bear locations can be reversed here, so it didn't matter whether you put uh, the black bear under D and the brown bear under C, it would have been equally correct. So one point for correctly illustrating the evolutionary relationships among the four species. And then one point uh, for indicating with the letter A, that the panda bear was the out-group. So great job on part B. Now let's take a look at C, D, and E, and we'll answer these together. C reads, a student claims that mitochondrial DNA sequence comparisons provide a more accurate phylogeny of bear species than do the LIS protein sequence comparisons. Provide one piece of reasoning to support the student's claim. D reads, a researcher genetically engineers a mouse strain by deleting the mouse LIS gene and replacing it with the polar bear LIS gene. Predict the most likely difference in phenotype of the transgenic mouse strain compared to the wild-type mouse strain. Then justify your prediction. Finally, for E, describe how the mutation in the LIS gene became common in the polar bear population. If the LIS gene were the only determinant of fur color, predict the percent of white offspring produced by mating between a polar bear and a brown bear. So take another minute, answer C, D, and E using EdPuzzle. And then we'll come back and we'll look at uh, the exam writers' answers. Alright, let's take a look at C first. C says, a student claims that mitochondrial DNA sequence comparisons provide a more accurate phylogeny of the bear species than do the LIS protein sequence comparison. Provide one piece of reasoning to support the student's claim. Uh, and these are accepted responses. Genes show more variability in nucleotide sequence than proteins do in amino acid sequence. Now, have you remembered that it takes three nucleotides with three nitrogen bases? That's how we kinda simplify it, to equal one amino acid sequence? So you have more opportunities for flexibility and changes within a gene sequence. And so there is more of a fine control and more of a precise or precision around relatedness when you look at genes. Let's look at the second one. Mitochondrial DNA genome contains multiple genes versus one LIS gene. That makes sense as well. Anytime you can use a combination of genes to compare organisms or a complete genome to compare organisms, that's gonna be a more precise representation of relatedness once again. And then here, the phenotype associated with the LIS gene is under strong selection, alright? Which means it's being selected for or is advantageous in the particular group that has that particular gene, okay? So I hope you did well on C part. Let's take a look at the answer for D, and D read again. A researcher genetically engineers a mouse strain by deleting the mouse's LIS gene and replacing it with the polar bear LIS gene. Predict the most likely difference in phenotype of the transgenic mouse strain when compared to the wild-type mouse strain, and then justify your prediction. So first, you're going to make your prediction, and the predict, the accepted predictions would be the mouse fur and or eyes will not have pigment, uh, or will have reduced pigment. Or the mouse fur will be white or lighter. And that makes sense because we know that the polar bear version, the heavily mutated version of the polar bear LIS gene renders that lack of color or the transparentness in their fur coat. So you would expect a similar phenotype if you were to take out the mouse's kind of natural or innate gene of LIS gene and put in the polar bear LIS gene, so this is consistent. And then your justification, one point for either of these responses. The polar bear LIS gene or the LIS protein is associated with a lack of pigment or white hair. Or you could have put the mutated human LIS gene or the LIS protein is associated with a lack of pigment in hair and eyes. So here, they use the polar bear as a comparison, and you can look at the setup of the question where they use this kind of similar phenotype example in humans. You could also use that as a justification as well here. And all of that was in the setup of the question. And, and most often in a lot of the long free response questions, the setup of the question will give you a lot of support for your answers later on. Alright, and let's look at E part, the last part. Describe how the mutation in the LIS gene became common in the polar bear population. If the LIS gene were the only determinant of fur color, predict the percent of white offspring produced by mating between a polar bear and a brown bear. And so first is the description of how the mutation of the LIS gene became common, and it says here that natural selection for white fur phenotype. So it just means that in, in this environment where the polar bear lives, having this wider transparent fur color or fur type is advantageous to their survivability, alright? Their ability to kind of reproduce. And in that way, the heavily mutated version of the LIS gene and its protein have been conserved over time. We've kept it because it's advantageous. And the second piece here, your prediction of the percent of white offspring produced by mating between a polar bear and a brown bear is zero percent, okay? We know that this is autosomal recessive, which means you need two uh, recessive versions of the gene to have this white fur coat. And the setup of the question also told us that this heavily mutated version of the gene only exists in polar bears. So if you had a brown bear in the mix, the brown bear would not have, or we would suspect it would not have, a heavily mutated version of this gene per the setup of the question. And so you would not have any, there will be hybrids. There will not be any homozygous recessive uh, with this kind of transparent and white fur coat that you have in the polar bear. Alright, y'all, so that's the end of this uh, study session number five. I hope you've enjoyed yourself, I hope you've taken a lot of great notes, and I can't wait to see you soon in our next session. Take care of yourself, and yeah, best of luck on your class exams and the AP exam, bye, everybody.